Mr. Howe, in the Press Journal questions, you've recently stated that there is always room in any government to cut the budget. Many feel that during the latest economic downturn, the city budget was already cut dramatically, and therefore, there is neither a desire nor a need for more budget cuts now that the economy is improving. Can you please explain your position, and do you mean never that there's always room in any government to cut?
Yes, of course, there's always room in any government to be cut. Let's remember, we're still in a traditional budgeting plan, which in its simplest terms says, "How much did we spend last year? Let's add 4%, 5%, 6%." Whatever that is. What that does is it artificially creates inflation. In certain areas, it may not need more money. So, is there room to cut a budget? There's room to cut a budget in any government. I think you could look to our federal government and find out what the worst kind of budget is, and that's why we're so far into debt. That is the way most governments and municipalities are run. So absolutely, I think there's always room to do things more efficiently, and that is how a zero-based budget works.
Mr. Kramer, as recently as yesterday's city council meeting, you appear to be making the financial argument for a partial sale of the city's outside utility customers. Asking the question, wouldn't losing 60% of revenue be okay if at the same time, the city cut 70% of its utility expenses and became more efficient? City manager O'Connor, and particularly Mayor Winger, seem to slightly disagree with that financial premise. And in fact, Inside Bureau, in an August 7 article, clearly lays out why they feel a partial sale, leaving only Bureau's 12,000 customers, would drive utility rates and taxes up while forcing drastic service cuts. Do you feel a partial sale is a viable option for dealing with the city's utility issue? And if so, how would the remaining city rate payers afford it?
That's actually a really good question. I guess I'm no different from everybody else, I gotta take my medicine on this one. You know, keep in mind, we're negotiating with OUC. And when the city manager says that he doesn't want to do a partial sale, and the mayor says they don't want to do a partial sale, OUC is probably the one entity out there that really doesn't want to do a partial sale. They want 60% of our load. And in order to renegotiate lower prices with them, they need guarantees that we're not going to go in that direction, and they need long-term guarantees in order to give us a better price. So, you know, I don't blame the city manager or mayor for wanting to kind of hush that idea, because that sends a signal to OUC that we're not going to negotiate with good faith in getting those rates down. However, the idea came actually from Jerry Hartman, who'd been in the utility industry for about 20, 30 years. You know, these are experts in the industry. You know, I talked to a lot of experts in the industry, and they say, "Hey, you can drop load and reduce your expenses more than your, you know, the revenues." Did I say that right? In any case, you can become more efficient by dropping off customers who are less profitable and keeping the customers that are more profitable. That can happen. You know, the problem that we have, FPNL doesn't want a partial sale. They really don't. And if we really were to do a partial sale according to FMPA, the outside customers would have to take up contingent liabilities, because FPNL doesn't want it, and FMPA doesn't want it. So the outside customers have to take on those liabilities. And if that is the case, then you probably couldn't afford it. But right now, we're negotiating with OUC. OUC wants the full load in order to get a good price.
Thank you, Jake. Take this one, we're gonna start with you, Jack. In a July 11th article in Inside Bureau, Mark Schuman wrote the following. By directing Water and Sewer Utility Director Rob Bolton and City Manager Jim O'Connor to develop a plan for moving the wastewater treatment plant off the waterfront to a site just east of the airport, the council set in motion a $25 million boondoggle that may well prove unstoppable. The taxpayers' association has similar concerns when it comes to spending that amount of taxpayer dollars on this future project. In the Press Journal's Ask the Candidates question section, some of you seem in favor of this move, some strongly. Please explain your position and why you feel this move is both necessary and fiscally sound, or if opposed, please state that reasoning.
I'm not opposed to moving the sewer plant off the river, but I'm opposed to moving it off now. I think it's a, it just financially isn't feasible. It may be five or six years from now when we get the debt down. And certainly, it would be, everyone, I think, would like to have those two utilities off of the river. And so, I'm in favor of moving it when and if it's economically feasible, and I don't think now is the time.
Pass it along to everybody's same point.
Yeah, so I'd love to get this eyesore off of our river. Not only is it unattractive, but it also poses a serious danger to our lagoon. Although it's zero discharge, you have a hurricane, all your pipes are down, you could have a major contamination in our lagoon. So I certainly think it's something that we need to be, start planning for and doing and look at in a financially responsible way.
I agree that if we can financially do it, that obviously would be a good idea to do. And let's kind of work on, we can work together, this is something we can work together on. Let's work together to see if we can make this happen. In the same line, one of the things that we're worried about with the lagoon are septic tanks. And I have a proposal, and I want to see if my friends who are less than dedicated to the sale of Bureau Electric will join me. If we can sell Bureau Electric, I will pledge that I will take, join them to take $3 million of the funds realized from the sale, and I will set it aside to be able to convert septic tanks that exist near the lagoon. That will advance the elimination of septic tanks into the lagoon by 30 years. So, here's my challenge. Let's get the sale done, and we can do something for the lagoon. How about it?
I too believe that this is a part and parcel kind of a thing with cleaning up the lagoon. Many people know that 4 million gallons of raw sewage that fell into the lagoon up in, I believe it was Palm Bay, just a few days ago. You really think that couldn't happen here? Some people say that it couldn't, I believe it could. This, I would like to see it off of the lagoon. I remember a deal that was cut with the state, the state brought it to us, I believe it was Stan Mayfield that did. It would've cost us nothing for this deal. We declined. The county came to us with another deal, we declined. So I think, I think what I'd like to do is look at our options, see what's most cost-effective, and perhaps even go back to the county and see if they still even want to talk to us. So that's my, that's my point of view on that.
In everything, we need to know our options. We went through a process of finding out just how much it would cost to take that plant off the river, and we did our homework on it. You know, right now, we don't need to move that off there unless, you know, there's somebody that's willing to pay us the $25, $26 million it takes to move that off there. To end up putting that kind of burden on our taxpayers for aesthetic reasons, somebody's got to come up with a $26 million aesthetic reason to move it. But, you know, as of right now, you know, having our own sewer system, having our own system there, gives us the opportunity to start taking septic systems off of the river. You know, had we have sold that system three, four years ago, the septic system would not have been possible. This allows us to be responsible and start cleaning up this river, and this is something we've got to do.
My answer is a sort of a combination. Certainly, we can't move it, I'm for moving it, the idea of moving it. We can't move it for another five or six years because of the debt payments that are on it now. It does have some benefits to it. Rather than have two maintenance programs, two maintenance offices, one at near the waterfront there and another near the airport, you could combine the two. So it has marginal efficiencies, plus you'd have a new plant versus an old plant, so it has marginal efficiencies. But I think it is not a priority now. I think several years from now, it may very well be a priority, but it's not now. If we do a long-range plan and this pops up, it's something we've got extra money for, and it makes sense, combined with some of the other things we're trying to do with the lagoon, okay, but at this particular time, it doesn't make sense.
This is a quick follow-up to that question, and we'll start again with you, Jack, and that way you can just pass it down, since it does relate to this question. Any borrowing for projects such as this will be reliant on the city maintaining a healthy credit rating. In 2017, the city will be required by the government under a Gatsby Act 45 to list their OPEB liabilities on their balance sheets, not just footnotes as is done now. As of 9/30/2013, the ending of the last fiscal year we have records for, this amount was just over $55 million and growing. Do you feel the city is in a healthy financial position?
Presently, I don't think healthy enough to be borrowing that kind of money, and I would not be in favor of any more debt.
As stated earlier, we desperately have to address these unfunded pensions and our OPEB issues. We are still in negotiation with the Teamsters Union to convert our defined benefit plan to a defined contribution. That'll be key in stopping that growing liability. However, with OPEB and looking at healthcare, that one's going to continue to escalate, and it has to be addressed.
Our debt in other areas are dwarfed by our debt in two areas, that is pensions with, what's it, $100 million, plus $300 million plus. And the number they came up with for our electric debt, our electric debt was $385 million. Our debt, we have been presented with a bill from the FMPA. Remember, the FMPA is the problem. They're not our friends, they're not our partners, we're not here to talk to them, we're not here to understand them. They are our captors. And they have presented us with a bill of up to $50 million. Now, we take in $4.5 million a year in property taxes. That's the same as, let's see, what's that, 10 times, 11 times? That's 11 times our, 10 times our total property tax income. That's like if you had, if you made $40,000 in your household, you've been presented with a bill for $400,000, and you were told that you have until 2016 to pay it. The bill for fighting the electric sale is coming due. Taxes up, rates up, debt up, we are in deep trouble. If we want to get further in trouble, borrow some more. Thank you.
This is, this is one thing you never want to do, we're speaking in front of a bunch of people, but John, you got off track, you started thinking FMPA and how bad they are, and I'd like for you to please repeat the question.
No, no, no problem. No problem, I don't mind doing that at all. Any borrowing for projects such as the moving of the sewer water treatment plant will be reliant on the city maintaining a healthy credit rating. In 2017, the city will now be required by the government under a Gatsby 45 to list their OPEB liabilities on their balance sheets, not just footnotes as is done now. As of 9/30/2013, this amount was just over $55 million and growing. Do you feel the city is in a healthy financial position?
We're in a terrible financial position. I don't think it's going to be a really good option for us to move this water sewer treatment plant out here for a cost of whatever the number is, 20 or 25 million dollars. It's just something else we need to pay for over time. But it's, I want to go back to the fact that we had a deal at one point in time that was going to allow us to do it for nothing. See, the difference between the county and the way they run their sewer system and the way that we run it, we run it as an income system. The county runs it as a service to their citizens. So it's completely different concept. We do it to make money, they do it to provide a service. So I like, I like the way the county does it better. Speaking of, speaking of credit, when the OUC was asked to take our liabilities, they, I just want to make it clear that their credit rating is a lot better than Bureau Beach's credit rating. So think about that when you think about this electric sale.
I'm not really in favor of taking out more debt to move the water sewer system off. You know, I may be more in favor of taking debt on to, you know, for the lagoon projects that have a revenue source behind this. Kind of a page you go, type of projects are really not that bad. As far as the pension goes, you know, we're about $52, $53 million in the hole. You know, this would be a really good agenda item to have our financial person come and explain. You know, last year, we put ourselves on a track that in eight years, we'd be fully funded, and we are on that track already. We dipped down from bad rating last year, this year, we're back up.
Jake, can I ask just one question? Just, I just want to make sure that we're clear. Are we talking the pensions or the OPEBs? Is that, I was just asking about that. I just want, I mean, are you saying the OPEBs are going to be cleared up in eight years?
Well, you know, when I mentioned the 52, I mentioned the pension. Keep in mind, pension and OPEB are completely different.
Right.
OPEB is healthcare.
Right, that's why I was asking about the OPEB, because I know there is a plan in place to address the pension in a timeframe. That's why I was more concerned that in 2017, the OPEB is going to start showing up on the balance sheet for the city of Vero, and there wasn't a plan, at least when we recently met with the city, to adequately address that in any certain timeframe. Unless you're aware of one?
No, there is, Jim Riddler, you haven't talked to the finance committee about a trust fund. The trust funds allow you to convert that liability into a payment, and it does not go on your balance sheet. That is something that, you know, the county has already done.
They have.
And this is, this is an acceptable practice. The only reason we would not do that is because you can't, once you put money into a trust fund, you really can't put it back out. You know, keep in mind, the OPEB liability has been there for years. This is just an accounting measure to put it on there. We've dealt with it for years already.
Time to do guests.
Brian.
Oh, hi, Brian. Oh, I know, I tried, I told you I'd try to do. If you would like to answer the remaining questions, we would love to have you, Brian.
You've got, you've got three minutes, two minutes for me? I can do two or three minutes?
Absolutely.
Then I need to leave.
Okay, okay, absolutely, okay. Mr. Old, if you can just answer that last question, then we'll let Brian speak.
I think there's some confusion here. I think that what happens is the pension liability goes on the balance sheet, not the OPEB. But where we are right now is, is our pension, our pension is not completely on it now, and if we address the financial condition of the city, it's got an A-plus credit rating, and I, I think that's a very good credit rating for this, for the city. A lot of cities are not as strong as we are. If you look over the last number of years, we've had a declining amount of property values by about 30%. We've had a population decrease of about 2 or 3 million. We've had declining revenues, and we've managed it very well by cutting expenses, by reducing our staffing from about 543 down to 390. We've done a very good job, and we've not adjusted taxes, in fact, the millage rate has gone down. So we've done a very good job of doing that. I went through the budget process, we sat around for five days, people really did a good job of managing and sticking to the budget and watching each department. I think the, the city has managed very well financially and is in good financial shape. Yes, we have these, these benefits that are, that are an issue of healthcare. That is definitely an issue, and we have to, have to address it. We're addressing it according to code right now. We're doing, we're paying as we go, and that's good. We, we would love to be able to fund it, but in this kind of situation that we're in right now, we can't fund it. But we're being very responsible, we're doing a very good job.
And with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Brian Hedy. He did not get to make an opening statement, so since you did stop in to see us, Brian, and I think I explained to them the situation with the phone, and I would like to let you speak now.
Thank you, sorry, the phone and my earpiece didn't work. I don't need to make an opening statement, you all know who I am, but I'll give you the short version. On the railroad, they ought to use their own money and not cost us anything. This is nonsense that the taxpayers are going to have to pay every month for the rest of our lives because of their railroad crossing changes. The railroad did announce yesterday they've decided to do private funding, they're going to go out and try to sell some bonds instead of using our loan. That's a good thing. Let them go out and raise their own money, let them spend their own money. As far as the electric is concerned, we need to stop two lawsuits for the county and Indian River Shores. To be suing the city is outrageous, and we need to stop both of those lawsuits. We know how much the electric utility is worth, because the FPNL has made us an offer. We know that Indian River Shores is 10%, the county's 40%, whatever the numbers are, we know those numbers. And we just sell them their portion of the utility for their portion of the proceeds, and then they can go to FPNL or go anyplace they want. As far as the solid waste and those kinds of things joining with the county, I'm a city resident, and I have no problem with the solid waste staying right with the city. I have no problem with the water sewer staying right with the city. I don't need to join the county for either one of those things. I heard Mr. Old talking about the pensions. The pensions need to be defined contribution, not defined benefit. And I know that Plaugh has been trying to do that, I know that we've talked about that. I tried to do that when I was on council back in 2009 and 10. What are the other issues that you're, to the questions you're talking about? Have I missed one?
I think you covered, I think you covered most of them, Brian.
Did I cover them all?
Yes, yes, the tax millage rate, keeping it the same?
No, the tax millage rate. The tax is going to be what the tax is, and we need to raise the taxes to cover the expenses. But that means that we have to raise the taxes a little bit, so be it. I'm not all that offended by that. I think that we need to run an efficient government, and we need to run it as inexpensively as possible. And some of the things that we do, like spending $100,000 to sue us, or $100,000 to sue all Board Floridas, is an outrageous waste of tax dollars, and we need to stop the insanity. If anybody has, you want to know what kind of a council member I'll be, read my book, Liars, Cheats, and Thieves, and you'll find out. And my three minutes are up. I think that the three minutes, with respect to the three-minute rule, I think that if you want to represent people, the only way that you can represent people is by listening to them. And you can't represent them fairly and honestly if you don't listen to them. That's outrageous. And the, there's, there's three choices that you have in this election. My name is the number two on the ballot, so when you're making your number two choice, it's easy, vote for me. And I don't care who your top pick is, and I don't care who your third pick is, as long as I'm your second pick. Anybody that wants to know anything at all from me, my number is 696-4242, 696-4242. And I have some vets that I'm taking care of today. Thank you very much.
Glad we got to hear your comments. Okay, well, I did promise that we would hear from all seven candidates today, and we were able to do that. Okay, the next question, we're going to start with Plaugh. In a September 19th editorial, The Press Journal wrote the following regarding the utility dispute between the town of Indian River Shores and the city of Vero Beach. All of the customers of the city's electric utility, including Shores residents, deserve the opportunity to obtain lower rates. The editorial concluded by stating, "As a general rule, it's rarely a good thing for governments to sue one another, unless, as is the case with Indian River Shores, you have a compelling case that merits redress. Both the Shores and the counties' government officials are unanimously in agreement that they are looking out for their constituents' best interests by taking the courses of action each has recently embarked upon regarding the utility issue. If elected or re-elected to the city council, what one specific policy initiative would you bring forward in order to address the utility matter in a way that you feel would best serve your constituents?"
I think the best thing to serve my constituents is to continue to find a way to complete the sale to FPNL. I would go to Indian River Shores, to the county, to the school board, to the hospital, and I believe there's strength in numbers, and with that ability, use every possible way we can find to try to break free and to bring lower rates for our residents and businesses.
My responsibility as a member of the Bureau Beach City Council is to the voters and residents of the city of Vero Beach. I do not believe it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Vero Beach to fight the citizens and residents of Indian River Shores. Indian River Shores is not the problem, FMPA is the problem. People who said that they don't think the Indian River Shores lawsuit is a, is a serious problem, really? Not a serious problem? 75% raise in your taxes, 20% more on your electric rate? Sounds like a serious problem to me. I think we should not be fighting Indian River Shores, we should save that money, and let's fight the FMPA. And I want to point out that the only reason we're doing this is because we were led to this suit. Two years ago, when we were told this was a done deal, the suit wasn't here. And now we're told it went from a done deal to a dead deal in six months. How did that happen? I've left on your tables a timeline, as to the timeline as to why the sale unraveled. I also left on your table a list of things that a pro-sale council could do that an anti-sale council has not done, and has not done. And lastly, not doing the sale is bad for the lagoon. And we should be hiring, instead of lawyers, hiring lawyers to fight Indian River Shores, we should be hiring scientists to help us fight pollution in the lagoon. Thank you.
Indian River Shores is performing their due diligence in protecting their citizens. They're doing what they believe is best for, for the people that they represent, which is exactly what we need. We need a strong city council so that we can take the 800-pound gorilla in the room, which is the FMPA, that takes our money with impunity. We need to take it to legislature, we need to take it to the governor, and we need to do it with, as a combined effort. You know, I, I personally feel like we've lost a bridge with the, with the county. I don't feel like we associate with the county as much as we should, and clearly, we don't associate with Indian River Shores as much as we should. We all need to work together on this issue. And we need to stop the secret meetings with the FMPA and the federal government and put an end to all that. Everything needs to be on the table, we need to work together, and that's what I would like to do for our community, to get us out of these unreasonable contracts with the FMPA.
Questions like these sometimes are really hard to understand. Keep in mind, if we sue the FMPA, any forward momentum on the FPNL sale immediately stops. When you sue somebody, they quit working with you. On the lawsuit with Indian River Shores and the county, if we did absolutely nothing on those lawsuits, there are other utilities that have stepped in and said they will fight the fight, including Florida Power and Light. The idea that we can, as a governmental body, just take somebody's territory and give it to whoever we want, that just scares the heck out of every single utility company in the state of Florida. That undermines the security of all of their financial models. You cannot bond out to buy a new generator like FPNL did for about, about $2 billion and then have your territory pulled out from underneath of you. It can't happen. There is a reason why every utility has, has came in on the side of Vero Beach on this thing. If Vero Beach does nothing, these lawsuits will still fail. I do not have any confidence whatsoever that this is going to happen. But somewhere along the line, we've got to realize what we're doing, and we're making it quite a mockery of the situation at a state level. There's a reason why when we went to a state level and we tried to get these things through, nobody listened. You know, there's a reason why they're all coming at us, and they're looking at us like, "What are we doing?" I'm sorry, you know... I'm sorry. You know, every utility company has come out against us on this thing. These lawsuits are absolutely silly. I'm sorry.
I agree with Jay on the whole idea of suing and going against FMPA, and we have to wait until these suits settle out. The only thing that we can really do in the short term is really lower the rates. That's the issue, is lower the rates. Work with Orlando Utility Commission, and look in our own areas and see if we can mothball our plant and work with lowering the rates that way.
I think in the face of the Indian River Shores lawsuit, we just have to wait and see what the results are going to be, if it's going to go to court or what the next steps will take. I've said in one of my earlier remarks, and I still feel this way, that we should be careful about our next steps with FMPA. And I do think that any legal action against them will stall the entire deal with the only interested buyer that we have, part of our life.
Okay, Charlie, this will be the last question. We're going to start with you, and then we'll have the summaries after that. Obviously, yesterday showed everybody here in the county how much everybody is concerned about the health of our lagoon. Agree, disagree on how that should be done? It was very clear that people were concerned. In a September 15th article entitled, "Is Septic Conversion Valid When Science Conflicts on Indian River Lagoon Effects?", TC Palm wrote the following. "There are two schools of thought about septic systems, even amongst experts. Some say the systems can cause harmful algae blooms, while others say when properly installed, they efficiently eliminate runoff. Vero Beach plans to test a hybrid septic system that would cost homeowners about $8,000 each, while St. Lucie County is focusing on stormwater projects due to what they feel is conflicting research on septic systems and pollution. How confident are each of you that the project plan for Vero adequately addresses both factual lagoon science and cost-effectiveness when it comes to the best use of taxpayer money and the vital long-term health of our lagoon?"
Thank you, John. A couple of quick things. The first is, is I've met with a number of scientists, and you're right, there's not a single source that they think is the biggest problem. But they have a list of suspects, and those lists of suspects do include septic tanks. Right now, there are 1,500, just short of 1,500 septic tanks operating within the city limits of the city of Vero Beach. 500 of those septic tanks are almost 30, or 33% of those septic tanks are within feet of the lagoon. Feet of the lagoon. The hybrid system that Vero Beach has come up with is an excellent system and is worth trying, and I think we should. Now, I've just told you about my plan, to take $3 million from the sale of Vero Electric, help people get hooked on those hybrid systems, and we can advance this by 30 years. Because right now, they're being replaced as they fail at a rate of 3% per year. So there is expected that it'll take 30 years to get rid of the septic tanks. If we sell Vero Electric, we can be rid of septic tanks immediately, 30 years in advance. I do want to point out one thing, that with all of our commitment for this, I understand that when this issue was being talked about in Tallahassee, when it was being decided whether this hybrid system was going to be approved or not, no one from Vero Beach went. No one. Do you know why it wasn't approved? Nobody went and got it approved. Nobody asked. It's exactly the same situation again as with FMPA. At the meeting the other day with Indian River Shores, we were, our attorney was asked straightforward, "Have you ever asked the FMPA to amend their contract?" And he said, "No." Really? Thank you.
I'm not scared to tell you that I don't know a heck of a lot on this issue. But what I do know is I don't want new tax districts to fund anything. I do feel personally that we don't have a real problem-solving answer to this at this point. We have ideas, we have theories, we have assumptions. I don't feel like we have an absolute answer. And to that, I still believe that the lagoon is a precious asset. So do I want to see us do everything we can to help the lagoon? Yes. But we must make sure that whatever we put our efforts toward is actually helping. You know, that removing nitrogen-laden muck helps, but that's not the total answer. So in short, let's do what we can do to make it a healthy lagoon, but let's make sure that what we're spending our money on actually works.
We have currently done three different options in order to help clean up the river. It would be a real travesty if we just did what people would think government does, to sit around and try to think of the answers and tie the stuff in bureaucracy. We went out and did action. We did a fertilizer ordinance to make sure that fertilizers would not get into the river and cause algae blooms. We're still in the mechanics of how we're going to enforce that. We're doing the baffle boxes, and we're selling land to fund that, to make sure that that happens sooner than later. We're also looking at the step system and going to start implementing that. I don't think there's any argument that septic systems leaching into the river causes problems. There's just no argument there. You know, as far as not getting this done at the legislative level, you know, I was there, I worked with people that were doing that, and quite frankly, it was put on the agenda at the last minute, and time ran out, and that didn't make it through committee. What had happened then is that we'd gotten together, worked with the governor's aides on this, worked with the Department of Health and the Department of Environmental Protection, and got the governor to talk with the Department of Health and redefine the interpretation of the law, and actually got this project off the ground. And there's a lot of people who helped do that, and it definitely wasn't me, but a lot of people in the IRNA, I know that's a bad name to somebody, but they went out there and they got the signatures, and they lobbied the governor to get this done, and thank God for Governor Scott, he came through for us and is really cleaning up the river, and I really appreciate him doing that.
I think several scientists are really trying to figure out exactly where the nitrogen comes from. They're pretty much convinced that it comes from, excuse me, one of three sources, fertilizer, stormwater, or septic. And which one is the biggest culprit, they don't really know. But it's best to us to work on all three, and we are working on all three, because the lagoon is not going to wait. We really are in a hurry to get things done, and waiting for scientists to be sure exactly what comes from which is not worth it. It's, we're taking action, and that's the right thing to do.
I agree, and I think the hybrid septic system eventually can become an act of science because we'll have the ability to test the lagoon after the system's been installed in these testing areas and to prove that in fact it is a good system. Our sewer system, our sewer utility is able to handle all of the homes with septic tanks that proves to be successful.
So we do have a good bit of science on where some of the nitrogen comes from. We have seen in other areas the effectiveness of the fertilizer ordinance in reducing nitrogen and phosphorus. So therefore, you know, continue to look at our projects for stormwaters because that can be effective. On the septic tanks, we need to concentrate on the septic tanks that were installed before 1983, before the latest regulations that are closest to the lagoon and the oldest, and slowly move there. But once again, you've got to do it in a cost-effective manner. You know, we don't approach it as a typical government, throw more money at it like the Veterans Administration or whatever, and think that that's going to solve the issue. It has to be handled systematically. And then again, you know, Vero Beach has to do what it can for its size. We're nine square miles outside of the airport. We have to work in conjunction with all the other communities that share the lagoon.
Hand it to Charlie, and Charlie, you can start the ending summary for everybody. 90 seconds, please.
Glad we gave Brian a break. I appreciate his work on behalf of veterans. If he needs to drive into the hospital, that's more important than talking to me. I think at the beginning of this meeting, one of the things I said is for you to look out and see what you can decide, and I think most of the things that we talked about have become very clear, despite what some of the answers might have been. You can pretty much tell one group and another. I apologize for being so passionate about this issue. I'm used to a spirited debate. I've worked at the legislature and at the Congress, and I understand that I could be caustic, and I really am sorry. But this is so, so important, and I'd like to take just a second to tell you why. In 2009, when I was elected, I ran into a person on the street, it was an elderly lady. She came up, and she, it was nighttime, and she said, "Are you Mr. Wilson?" And I said, "Yes, I am." And she said, "Mr. Wilson, I voted for you because I trust you to not let me down on selling Vero Electric." She said, "I'm 75 years old, and I never thought in my life that I would have so little and government would have so much." To some people, the electric issue is a problem of money. To me, as she showed me her oxygen machine, she said, "If I can't pay my electric bill, my electric bill is more than my mortgage. If I can't pay my electric bill, I'm going to die." And she said, "I'm counting on you." And I promised her, I promised that woman, "And I will not give up, and I will not quit, and I will not get over it. And if she's still out there, I want her to know, don't give up on me, because I absolutely will not give up on you." Thank you.
Here's Pla, you're next, and it's going to come this way, yep.
To say that the resolution of this electric issue is critical for our financial health and well-being within the whole community, and it's going to take persistence and commitment at the city council. I have a proven track record as an advocate for our electric rate payers. As an engineer with an MBA, years of public service, I had the education and the experience to face these challenges in the city. I ask for you to re-elect me to your city council.
In closing, I just have to say that I too am interested in solving the electric power plant issue. My approach is just not as passionate as some people, and I'm going to stick to my guns and say I do not want to upset the only buyer that we have interested in buying our utility, and I think there's a danger with some of the things that I've heard that will upset the applecart. I'm interested in serving at the council. I've got a background where I've dealt with difficult issues. I've had to deal with consensus. I think I could do an adequate job, and I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
I have enjoyed very much walking around and meeting people in the city. I've been to each one of the departments. I feel the city is really well-run. The department heads and everybody are very into running the city as well as possible. I've been pleased with walking around and meeting voters that are involved here. I would very much like to be part of this council, and I would like to have your vote.
You know, I'm pretty well-known around the city for a saying, "It just all's well that ends." And sooner or later, I'd like to see a lot of this end, and I know people have different ways that they'd like to have this outcome of the electric issue come out. Quite frankly, we're waiting for those ideas. We'd like to hear from FPNL. We'd like to hear what they say to get this thing done. However, in the meantime, you know, I've got to ask the question, does conservatism count? One in four employees are now gone. The pension system is on track to be fully funded. Our reserves are higher than they've been the last five, six years. Our expenses are down. Does that count for anything? Is that not what you want? That's a very important question to answer. This is not a one-issue thing. It's a whole broad spectrum. To go ahead and ignore all the other issues just because you have one thing is probably not the right thing to do. But please, vote your conscience, vote the right way. I trust in the people of Vero Beach.
I think I made it very clear where I stand on my issues, I won't go back into that, but OPEC is not funded. The city's running at a deficit, and I think if you want somebody representative of you, you need to vote for Harry Howell on November the 4th. Thank you.
With that, on behalf of all of our guests here today, my fellow members, my fellow board members, put a lot of work into these forms. I'd like to personally thank all six of the candidates for showing up. Seven, Brian, did come in, so thank you to all seven of you for showing up. I do want to make it clear, though, I do think it was important that we didn't just touch on one issue. If other people, Jay, if you feel they did go back to that, we did cover today taxes, spending, capital projects, All Board Florida, the lagoon, multiple questions to each of the individual people, the movement of the water and sewer utility plant, the lagoon and the septic systems. I just wanted to make it clear that, yes, I know some of the people have drawn a line as far as some of the, you know, where they feel the utility matter is, but I do think that people that wanted to get information on a variety of topics, I hope they did feel that they were able to get that done here today. So with that, I would like to say what I always say when I finish up these candidate forms. First of all, I'm thankful it's the last one of the year, so I'm very grateful for that. And second of all, I'll say what I always said, it's much easier to be the one asking the questions than answering them. So thank you all very much. We just want to let everybody know, our next meeting is Wednesday, November 12th. It's going to be a follow-up, All Board Florida forum, with Daniel Ritchie and Dylan Ryan.